I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, October the 6th, 2014. Welcome everyone. Pastor George Gany, is he here? He's back in the back. Smyrna Presbyterian Church, I didn't see you've lost so much weight. We're glad that he's here. He's gonna give our invocation and our pledge to the flag, so would everyone please rise?
Let us pray. Most gracious and loving heavenly Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, we thank you and praise your name that you provided for us this beautiful country and state and beautiful city of Smyrna which to live and to prosper. We thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy and for the blessings that we receive daily. We especially lift up to you tonight, oh Lord, and ask your blessing upon this city, our esteemed Mayor Bacon and this wonderful city council. We pray that you would be pleased tonight to direct and prosper all their deliberations and decisions to the good of your glory and for the good of your people. We pray that everything they do tonight will be so well ordered so as to advance the welfare and safety and honor of the people. Help them tonight to do the right things. Father, we also pray for the safety and well-being of our police department and our fire department and Roy Acre, our public works and all those in our city who serve and labor on our behalf and for our good. Bless them and protect them, we pray. Again, oh God, bless this meeting and all those present here. May everything said and done be pleasing in your sight, for it is in Jesus' name that we pray and ask these things. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those folks that are new to town or looking to change, I'm sure that George and the folks at Smyrna Presbyterian Church be glad to have you just down here on the right. They are a great community partner and we're glad that they're there. Agenda changes, the only agenda change that we have is that on the consent agenda, item D, we're gonna hold off on that until next meeting, we have some questions about that. So those are the only changes. The Mayor Oral Report, we have a proclamation, recognition of respect for firefighters, and I know we've got Betty Curley here, and Mr. Ron Finlay is gonna read that proclamation. Betty, you wanna come up while Ron's reading it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my honor to read the proclamation that we issue annually. A proclamation by the mayor and the city of Smyrna, "Respect for Firefighters." Whereas, the members of the Smyrna Optimists Club believe that a firm commitment to the safety of the citizens of Smyrna and Cobb County is a fundamental responsibility, and whereas, the members of the Smyrna Optimists Club recognize that in addition to firefighters' duties, fire department personnel provide emergency medical service, administering basic life support to help preserve life until more advanced treatment can be provided and thereby significantly reducing deaths and disabling injuries, and whereas, the members of the Smyrna Optimists Club recognize that fire inspection duties performed by the fire department personnel are a powerful proactive measure which prevent a great amount of property damage, injury, and death year after year, and whereas, the members of the Smyrna Optimists Club annually recognize and honor the members of the Smyrna Fire Department and other public safety professionals who risked their lives to help safeguard the welfare and property of citizens and continue to support programs aimed at raising public awareness of the importance of fire safety. Now therefore, I A. Max Bacon, Mayor of Smyrna, Georgia, do hereby proclaim October 10, 2014, as Respect for Firefighters Day, and ask all citizens of Smyrna area to join the members of the Smyrna Optimists Club in expressing thanks to the members of the Smyrna Fire Department for their invaluable service they performed to the community. In witness hereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of Smyrna to be affixed upon this sixth day of October in the year of our Lord, 2014. A. Max Bacon, Mayor. Be happy to present this to you both now and on Friday for our weekly luncheon.
Betty, I know you've got some words to speak.
Always. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for this proclamation, and I want to ask everyone to join the Smyrna Optimists in paying our respect to the Smyrna Fire Department who does so much to make our community a safer place to live. And I invite all of you of the city council, as I always do, to come to breakfast. I know I always see Ron there and Corky, and I wanna see more of you, so looking forward to seeing y'all Friday morning, 7:00 AM, to help us pay respect.
You do the best in calling us out every year.
Right.
So, thank you so much, Betty.
Thank you.
I'll see you Friday.
Okay, thank you.
See you Friday. I think Susan Thayer's here, I know she's a candidate running for school board, a very important position. Susan, you wanna say something real quick? I don't know if there's anybody else just running for office. We usually barrage with folks that you see one time every four years, but Susan's been around. She has been around a lot.
Let's be clear on that. I've been very visible in our community, I hope, and very supportive of our schools. Of course, I've been a resident of Smyrna for over 30 years. I've been in the Cobb County school system for over 30 years, and much of that was done in the South Cobb area. Principal at Pebblebrook, councillor at Osborne, implemented the IB program at Campbell, so have a very vested interest in our schools. Also, daughter who will be starting as first-year teacher this year in first grade, so we wanna keep a solid school system, and even if you don't have children in schools, our property values, our businesses, it's all tied together. So, I am here to work and be involved in our community and keep open communication channels. I'm also the only candidate who has been supported by both of the educational organizations in the county, so appreciate your support, November the 4th. Thanks so much.
We just spent about, I gave him 15 minutes and he took 40 minutes, but Dale Gaddis, who is an area superintendent who is retiring.
I thought he was gonna be here at this meeting, so it was pre...
Yeah, he was, and he updated us on where we are with our schools and our progress and our scores, and it's pretty impressive, really, how well that we're doing, and a lot of folks don't know that.
There are a lot of good things that are going on that the community's not totally aware of, and we've got to make our community aware of that to try to pull more of our students back from private school and some of the charter schools, so hopefully we can do that, but there's always progress that needs to be made. So, thank you very much and appreciate your support. Thank you.
Anyone else? Item four on the agenda is land issues, zonings, and annexation. A is public hearing zoning request, Z14-021 rezoning R15 and RTD to RTD conditional for the development of 49, a 49-unit town home subdivision, 13.203 acre tract, land lot 342-379, 619 Church Road, Venture Homes, Inc. I'm sure the applicant's here somewhere. Mr. Taylor, will you please give the background on that?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. The applicant, Venture Homes Incorporated, is requesting a rezoning from R15 and RTD to RTD conditional for the development of 49 townhomes at a density of 3.71 units per acre at 619 Church Road. This rezoning will not require land use, change for the future development map from medium-density residential. This request was tabled at the August 11, 2014 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting to provide the applicant the opportunity to address staff comments and concerns, and the rezoning request was heard by Planning and Zoning Board on September 8, 2014. And, let's see, and Community Development recommends approval of this request with stipulations.
Okay. The applicant is here, this is a public hearing, is there anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make a public comment concerning this rezoning? For those that want to make a comment, or even just think you wanna make a comment, I wanna get you sworn in one time. So, the applicant and anyone that's gonna give testimony in this needs to step forward at this time and be sworn in. Remember, if you just think you wanna make a comment and you don't, then, it's a great group. Anybody, hey, yeah, here we go, we've got more, y'all, spread it out. Okay, if y'all will have a seat. This is in Ms. Susan Wilkinson's ward, and I'm sure she's gonna let Ken Sedgworth give a presentation. Ms. Wilkinson.
Thank you. I'd like to call Ken or Rusty up to tell us about the development.
Actually, Rusty's gonna give the presentation tonight.
Good evening. Mr. Taylor's given a great summary of the project. I'm gonna go into a little bit more detail as to, with respects to the project. Venture Homes is the applicant for the request. This property is located at 619 Church Road. It's located in land lot 342 and 379, and the property is approximately 13.203 acres in size and is located in Ward 5. Currently, the site is undeveloped, it is a wooded lot. There are two streams that run through the site, one along the northern property line and then one that bisects the property from south to north and connects with the northern stream. The existing zoning on the property is R15 and RTD, which is residential townhouse district. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property to RTD conditional, so they're proposing to change zoning to residential townhouse conditional, which is a site plan-specific zoning. I'll show you the site plan here in a little bit. The applicant is not proposing to change the future land use for the property, which is medium-density residential. These are the zoning map and the future development map. As you can see on the zoning map, the property is bounded on the northwest and south by RTD as well as RAD, and on the east by Limited Commercial, which is the Primrose Daycare. The future development map shows the area being surrounded by a medium-density residential. This is the overall proposed site plan. This is the 4.9 acres of the 13 acres overall that's being developed, and this is the only developable portion of the property. This is 8.71 acres, and this will all be preserved as part of this development, and it'll remain as open space for the development. As part of the zoning, the developers has to go back to FEMA to revise the FEMA flood plane maps. FEMA currently has the flood plane boundary listed at an elevation of 930 and is represented by this blue line on the map, but based upon the developer's existing survey of the property, the actual elevation for 930 looks more like this. So, they are currently in the process with FEMA of getting a letter of map amendment to change this flood boundary to what is currently out on site. This is the proposed site plan. As you can see, there are seven buildings on site, four of which are eight-unit buildings, two are six-unit building, and one five-unit building. The applicant is proposing the streets and utilities within the subdivision to be private and owned and maintained by the HOA. They have proposed, on the north side of the property, a 12-by-16 covered pavilion as an amenity feature, along with a walking path along the creek on the north side of the property and a footbridge over the creek on the western side of the property. Along with this rezoning, the applicant is requesting several variances. The first variance is a reduction of the front setback from 50 feet to 20 feet. Reduction of the side setback from 35 feet to 20 feet. A reduction in building separation from 40 feet to 20 feet. And an increase in building size from six units to eight units. This is a picture of the existing buffer between the Primrose Daycare and the subject property. It's made up of deciduous trees and some evergreen trees and shrubs. These are the proposed home elevations that'll front on Church Street. These are 25, 21-foot wide product, and they are three stories, and they'll be rear entry. These are the proposed townhome elevations for the townhomes within the development that are located off of Church Road. These are two-story product, and they'll be front entry. These are pictures of the subject property. These are pictures of the adjacent property. The two at the top are Huntington Trace subdivision. Got a picture of Primrose Daycare, and then also another picture of Surrey Park. These are some more adjacent properties. You have the single-family homes along Church Road, the homes along Old Concord, and then Westfield Trace that backs up to the property on the north side. Community Development recommends approval of the requests for rezoning from R15, RAD, RTD to RETD conditional for a development of 49-unit townhome subdivision at a density of 3.71 units per acre. There are 15 standard conditions that apply to this property, I'm not gonna read all those, so I've just listed the special conditions for the property. Special condition number 16, the development shall maintain the following setbacks, a front setback of 20 feet, a side setback of 20, and a rear setback of 40. The buildings within the development shall maintain the following building separations, front to rear 50 feet, front to side 40, side to rear 40, and side to side 20. Number 18, the driveway length should be a minimum of 22 feet. Number 19, each home within the development shall have a fire sprinkler system approved by the city fire marshal's office. Number 20, the developer should provide a right-of-way dedication along Church Road for the installation of a deceleration lane and sidewalk. 21, the developer should provide a five-foot sidewalk, two-foot grass buffer along Church Road, and a four-foot sidewalk with two-foot grass buffer within the development. The developer should provide a 10-foot landscape buffer per section 503 of the zoning ordinance along the eastern property line. Number 23, no stormwater management facility or portion of thereof should be located on any portion of the proposed lots. The stormwater management facilities shall be solely located on HOA property. Number 24, trees shall be planted the entire length of Church Road at an average spacing of no more than 40 feet. Number 25, all trees within the limits of disturbance and not located within a tree protection area must be removed during the land clearing and grading phase of the development. Number 26, no development permits shall be issued until the completion of the FEMA map provision. Number 27, approval of subject property for the residential townhouse district zoning shall be conditioned upon development of the property in substantial compliance with the site plan submitted, 930, 2014, and created by BH &amp; D Engineering, Inc. And finally, number 28, the applicant should be bound to the elevation submitted and dated July 11, 2014, and any changes to those elevations need approval of the Community Development Director. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Rusty, how many of those stipulations are standard stipulations?
From 16 to 28 are all special. 1 to 15 are the standard stipulations, which they comes directly out of section 1201 of the zoning ordinance.
Any questions to Rusty? Okay. I think we'll hear from the applicant.
Good evening, Mayor, and Smyrna City Council. My name is Sean Randall. I'm the chief operating officer for Venture Homes, the applicant, and I'm really pleased to be here tonight to present this zoning application. But before I get started, I wanted to give, for those of you who may not be familiar with Venture, a little brief history of the company. Venture Homes was founded in 1984 by our CEO, Bob White, who started with a single home in Mabelton. Venture Homes is Cobb County born and bred. Our headquarters is not 10 minutes away off Terrell Mill, adjacent to I-75. We've been building outstanding homes and quality developments in Cobb County and other parts of metro Atlanta for over 30 years. Before the recession, Venture annually did about 450 to 500 homes a year. This year, we're on a pace to close 100 homes and believe that in 2014, we can close as many as 200 homes in about 18 active communities, 12 of which are active today. So, we're bringing on four or five new communities in 2015. We're developing our first development since 2007. But the thing I really wanna stress tonight is that Venture Homes, Inc., in 1984, is still the same Venture Homes, Inc. today. We didn't reorganize, we've paid all our banks, we've paid our vendors, we've paid our subcontractors, but more importantly, we've continued to build quality homes, and when there's been a warranty issue, we've addressed it. And I'm not gonna stand here in front of council and say, "Your phone's never gonna ring," or Rusty or Ken won't get a phone call next week from a disgruntled homeowner, but I will say this, Venture Homes will be there to answer the phone and address any problem that may occur, just as we've done for 30 years. This community is a quality-driven, for-sale, 49-unit home, townhome development. It is adjacent to Limited Commercial on the east side, townhomes to the north, townhomes to the south, and R15 to the west. We think it's a logical step down in zoning from a high-density commercial use to a more dense residential use, and then on down to single-family. We're very excited about this project, and we think it's gonna be very successful. As Rusty pointed out, it's 13.2 acres, a density of 3.71, and there's been some comment about, "Well, the density you're developing is much, much greater," and you'll probably hear that from some folks tonight. But I would say that's also very, very common in our business, whether it's a single-family development or a townhome development. Once you take out the open space, the amenities, the common areas, the entrance, all those kind of things, your net developable is often very much in excess of the gross density. Theoretically, we could put 79 units on this piece of property. We're asking for 49. I do wanna thank Ken Sedgworth, Rusty, Eric Randall, Tim Grubau, and the rest of the city staff. They were fantastic to work with. You should be very proud of those folks. And I do believe that the site plan we're submitting tonight is a vast improvement over where we started. Not that we always agreed, and we had some very lively and spirited debate, but I think we ended up with something that's much better for the city and worthy of your consideration. I would also like to thank Joel Powell at Whittington and the rest of the Planning and Zoning Board for their vote of confidence in a 6-0 vote and sending this on to council. I think it's real important that we talk about the product, because I think we've hopefully addressed a lot of concerns there, and I'm gonna put this back up on the screen. We've hired Roger Caldwell, Caldwell Klein Architects, who's renowned in the metro Atlanta area for their quality product. Most recently, you'll probably know them as the, or know him as the driving force behind the Trayton Homes development on Atlanta Road just south of Belmont, Village Walk. This product, you know, we think is very exciting. You won't see garage doors from Church Road. I think that's one of the key features. You know, if you like what you've seen there just south of Belmont, I think you will like this product. I also wanna talk about pricing for just a second, because I think you'll hear some conversations about that. And a lot of this is, let me back up for one second. I wanna thank Susan for setting up a meeting last Wednesday night with some homeowners at the Surrey Park Gazebo, and I think we had about 30 folks show up there, and we had a lively debate, but I think we, you know, both sides got to kinda talk and listen. But one of the things that came out of that was pricing. We're very concerned about your pricing. And our product will be priced from the 190s to the 240s. We think that's very competitive, we think that's an asset to the city, and as I look at the numbers, and I presented some of those to Rusty and Ken today, our average price per square foot at $115 a foot is in excess by as much as 20 to 30% of the existing home sales on a price per square foot in the surrounding areas, whether you look at the townhome product or the single-family product. You know, we're very, very competitive. And I just happen, and that information all came out of Zillow, but I happened to pull the Smart Numbers data as well. Smart Numbers, for those of you who may not know, is probably the premier market research firm for housing in metro Atlanta. Vintage Square by Lennar sells at an average of $110 a foot, we're at $115. Village Walk Trayton, $121 a foot, but that was at the tail end of their project. Concord Hall, which is John Wieland Homes, which is probably the gold standard for a lot of folks here in the metro Atlanta area, $111 a foot. So, we are very competitive from that standpoint, we feel like. When we first proposed this project, I sat down with Susan and Wade to get their input on what they felt like, you know, we needed to present. The thing they stressed to us was amenities, walking trails, you know, access to the undeveloped part of the property. We have met that. We're gonna provide a 12-by-16-foot pavilion, we're gonna do walking trails along the north side of the property where the slope is much gentler and the creek vistas are very nice. Wade had mentioned in a memo to staff today his four major remaining concerns, and first was the common area and open space. We will combine that. These will be fee simple, so the homeowner will own their plot underneath their piece of, you know, their building. But all the remaining land will be put together and controlled by the HOA as, you know, I don't know if it'll be one tax ID, but we will combine it and all be under control of the HOA. You talked about a landscape buffer. This is the first time I've ever been asked to put a landscape buffer up against commercial project when you're a residential project. Usually, it's kinda the other way around, but we'll be glad to do that. As a matter of fact, I wanna buffer our homeowners from a parking lot. So, and then the concern over the eight-unit buildings, I really can't change that. Because of the amount of flood plain and the fact that there is a little bit of developable land on the other side of the creek, I just can't get to it. We're forced into this density to make the economics work. And then the concern over pricing, and I hope I've addressed that. Mayor Bacon, members of the council, I would ask for your support tonight. We look forward to working with you and the staff on making this a great project, and we would appreciate your support and approval. And I'll take any questions.
I'd like to, you got one, Andrew?
Did you just say that you're gonna, this is gonna be a fee simple development?
Yes, the units...
I understand that. Why?
We just find it's easier to manage.
We just find it's easier to manage. There will be a mandatory homeowners' association, of course, and everyone will be required, but you will own your parcel fee simple. We just find that's easier, and then the rest of the property we'll carve out, and that will be common area owned by the association. But you will, as a property owner, own your property.
Okay.
I'm curious about the trails. Once you build the trails, it's just for the homeowners to use?
Yes, sir. The streets will be private. And the trails, I guess there's a way to get back to this. The trails, I'm a bored guy, sorry. The trails are up here on the northern side of the property, and so, you know, you will have access on either, you know, either stubout street to get to those trails.
Okay.
Because one of the things that Susan and Wade both, you know, is that, you know, the city parks are currently very taxed and in terms of usage, and could we please provide, you know, something for our homeowners? So, you know, that's what we want to do, is underbrush this area and give them access to this creek down here, which runs along the northern side of the property, which is beautiful back there.
I have a couple of questions. One is with regards to the development being fee simple. And I guess my concern is that you see a lot of times with fee simple communities, they don't age necessarily as consistently as homes that have more of a condo set up. And do you anticipate that this is going to be an issue?
We really don't. We're going to require that the maintenance, yard maintenance and things like that be driven by the HOA, so that the grass will all be mowed. We're not going to rely on, you know, twelve-twenty-one church mowing their grass. I mean, we want this thing to look, so the HOA will be responsible for mowing the grass and maintaining the look, if you will.
Okay, and that's something that's going to be built into the HOA documents and their bylaws. They can change it if they want to as an HOA, but probably they won't. But that's just what I'm going to make sure, because a lot of times you go into a community and you can really tell, you know, you can have a fifteen-year-old community that is not fee simple, and it's managed by an HOA, and all the landscaping is done by one person. And I feel that those properties tend to age overall a lot better than properties that do have that fee simple. My next question is with regards to the trails, and it's also related to the HOA, because I feel like you're really putting something in the lap of the HOA that they won't necessarily recognize what the maintenance on something like that is going to be. And I would think that they'll probably keep their association dues fairly low if they're going to be maintaining the common areas, maintaining, you know, the landscaping, but to throw trail maintenance and things like that into the mix, I wonder if that's going to be something that they can, that's, if it's reasonable to expect that over the years, that's something that would be maintained in perpetuity. And if that's the intent, I wonder about really setting expectations in that regard in terms of the community who wants to see those trails happen, wants these to turn over to the HOA, the HOA can do as they please with them, right?
That is correct. And I do share your concern on that, and I've expressed that concern to Susan, you know, when we were discussing back and forth, and she mentioned a couple of communities that do have trails here, and I, you know, made note that, you know, the maintenance probably isn't where we would all like them to be. But, you know, what our hope is that we can set up the HOA with enough teeth to where that those things will be maintained. And we don't, we're very sensitive to going overboard on the HOA and what they have to, you know, maintain. So we are very sensitive to that.
Yeah, because that's usually not something that the, you know, the seller's agent will necessarily explain to the incoming homeowners, "Oh, by the way, you know, you're going to have this, it's going to be beautiful, and by the way, you're going to have to fund that down the road."
Yes, well, one of the requirements that Ken Cedrith made was that he wanted to see signs at the entry that say "private streets," so that there's no mistaking fifteen years from now when those streets have to be, you know, redone or potholes fixed or whatever, that that's an HOA obligation.
Right, that the HOA will understand that they're going to need to maintain a heck of a reserve.
That's right. That's right.
Mr. Randall, I had a couple of questions. One, you point out that a large portion of this is in green space already, notwithstanding the trail system. What percentage would you say of this tract is going to be green space?
I think it's about eight and a half, nine acres. Is that right? Rusty, I think, yeah, yeah, almost two-thirds.
Two-thirds.
Will be left natural.
And isn't it true that about four blocks away is the Wolf Center, one of the city's greatest amenities, I guess, for residents and nearby or other parks? And I tend to agree that we, as a city, are underparked and overused in our park system, but it's not that we demand one property owner fix. What is our bigger challenge? We do have recognizable opportunities that we're trying to pursue elsewhere in the city. But you have two-thirds of your property in green space, which is...
Well, I think it's also important to understand that, I think there's green space, and then there's green space. We actually, I say we, I think staff had some conversation with the Parks Department about, you know, would some of this be acceptable to the city of Smyrna to turn into, you know, a little pocket park or something like that? And I think the Parks people said, "No, thank you," in that it was just going to be too tough to develop, too tough to maintain, too tough. So, you know, keeping it as green space, natural area is probably the best thing. Now, of course, the HOA will be responsible for mowing, you know, the right-of-way along Old Concord and keeping that up, you know, but those are, you know, very minor overall expenses. But, you know, we think that it, the part we're talking about, you know, enhancing is very limited, and we think is really one of the prettiest parts of the property, and should therefore be a nice amenity, and hopefully will want to be maintained in perpetuity, that the homeowners themselves will realize that that's part of their value.
I think I share Mrs. Nullo's challenge, because I spent four years as an HOA president before coming on this panel, and the reserve requirements and the adequate amount of maintenance required within the HOA confines is something that the HOA needs to take serious care and guarding and make sure when we do pass it on from the developer to the HOA that they understand the challenges and the expenditures required to make that reserve possible.
And that's why, you know, we're talking about a twelve-by-sixteen open-air pavilion. We're not talking about conditioned space or, you know, again, things that will have to demand, you know, constant year-round maintenance. This is a concrete floor, some picnic tables, some barbecue grills, those kind of things.
Any other questions?
I have another question for you. I'm really floored by this fee simple. I'm really floored by it. Okay, who will do building maintenance? Will the individual homeowners do building maintenance?
No, the exterior, of course, will be maintained by the HOA.
What about roofs?
Roof, when I say exterior, I mean roof and siding and...
Well, then, what good does it do, the individual homeowner, to own the ground that their unit is located on? I mean, I don't understand your concept.
Well, and I'm not an attorney, and don't play one on television, but we have found over the years that that's the vehicle that works best, you know, for us. About a third of our product is townhome communities, and we've done them both ways. But we find that fee simple with a strong HOA is the best way to go.
Where, can you tell me one that you have that is run according to that concept?
Yes, ma'am. Park Trail on Ostell Road, we've got one over on South Cobb Drive, just off South Cobb Drive. There's several. And the yards are mowed all at once, you know, once a week or, you know, once every ten days is required in the summertime. It's just the HOA runs that part of it.
So folks know going in when they buy it, what the deal is?
Oh, everything's spelled out in the HOA documents.
Mr. Webb, you have something?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be optimistic and think you have a great HOA and a bunch of great residents out there. One of my major concerns was going in was the trail that you have back there and the attachment of the trail to the other side of the creek. And I still am a little bit concerned about it. I mean, what, how do you plan on doing that? I mean, you show up on your site plan, you show the trail crossing the creek, and, you know, basically it stops there on the other side, but...
And that's only because it's a private jungle over there.
The HOA people out there, and, you know, hopefully, two years from now, you got a group out there blazing a trail, so they'll have, continue this walking trail on through this nine and a half acres out there. And the other thing, of course, we talked about a little bit, was traffic, and that's something I think that I've mentioned to this governing body that we need to address internally. But the trail is my big question at this point, Mr. Randall. Appreciate you answering that.
Well, the trail really is, and the connection to the other side was really an outgrowth of conversation with Susan and Wade about, you know, wanting access. We put it down, or we put it up on the northern end of the property because that's the gentlest. If you tried to make that crossing anyplace else, the creek that bisects the property running south to north is about a four, five, six-foot, just almost sheer drop. So we didn't want to put a crossing there in the interest of safety. So we've got one down at the bottom, and again, we've talked, you know, we've talked to landscape architect about getting out there and doing, you know, some stepping stones, because, understand, all that's floodplain, and we know what happened, what was it, four or five years ago? There was a lot of property that wasn't floodplain that all of a sudden became floodplain. So we know that's in the floodplain, so we're very concerned about that. And obviously, you know, to the extent we can do, you know, stepping stones and those kind of things, you know, that's, you know, something longer-term, low maintenance is the direction we will head.
So there's no bridge involved in going from one side of the...
We will look at that, but I...
No, I share your same concern that a good rain, and that bridge may end up somewhere.
Yeah, that bridge may be, you know, a half a mile away, up against a storm drain. So, you know, we're very, and clearly the pavilion, you know, out of the floodplain, that's unbuildable land, high and dry. But, you know, we do share that concern.
Other questions? Ms. Wilkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. So I heard you mention that the HOA would be responsible also for cutting the right-of-way along Old Concord. Did I hear you say that?
Yes, ma'am.
And so I guess I'm concerned about the, that the whole nine acres as far as any maintenance that might be involved, or if there's any cleanup of it and how they will access it, because I think it kind of drops off there on Old Concord. It seems like it's, there is a little bit of a right-of-way that's level with the road, and then I think it drops down. So I don't know as far as if they needed to get back there to clean anything up, if there's, I don't know if in this area, if there's things that float into that area, like I've heard happen in other areas with the creeks as far as debris and sometimes tires, sometimes other things as well, so...
Well, clearly, we're going to clean up the site. There's some trash that unfortunately, you know, people pull off and they dump trash on the property, so we will clean all that up. I have walked the entire northern creek, and that seems to be very nice, very pristine, very clean. But obviously, to the extent someone does dump on the property, that will be an obligation of the HOA to, you know, follow the city ordinances and keep their property clean.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I've never heard anybody say anything, good things about your company. I don't know if there's somebody that's, has said something bad in your opening remarks. And that's pretty good, because I do hear some folks bad-mouthing other construction companies and building companies, but I've never heard anything, good things about you also.
Bob White continues to stay active. He's our visionary and really our driving force, and that's just the way he does business.
All right, if you'll have a seat. We had some folks that signed up. If you'll, those that were sworn in, please come forward, tell us who you are and where you live at, and make your comments. And I would just say this, I know y'all are a smart group of folks, and just if five or six people keep saying the same thing over and over again, we'll get it, so. Thank you very much, and we'll start with you, ma'am.
Good evening, and thanks for the opportunity to come today to talk to you. My name is Veronica McKenzie, and I live in Westfield Trace. I'm not sure if I'm supposed to stand away or stand closer to it, but I live in Westfield's Trace. I'm for development, however, I've got serious concerns about this development, and I want you to seriously consider this. I've lived in Westfield Trace for twelve years. I've kept my points down, so I'll be brief. My biggest concern is the actual development basically being in a floodplain. When I moved into Westfield Trace, I live in the first block as you turn into Westfield Trace, nobody told me my property was in a floodplain. It was until I was closing, I was told that I'd have to get floodplain insurance. The good thing at that time was my actual foundation was not in the floodplain. So that's a huge concern. The other thing is, I think it might be better if I talk away from it. Okay, the other...
You need to look a little bit closer, though.
Yeah, that's fine. The other thing about development is that I notice every time somebody wants to develop something and it's not working for them, they go and find a great engineer. Six years ago, I received a letter to say the floodplain had moved, so that forced me to get more insurance for my property. But not only that, it's developed it, I cannot sell my property. I'm quite happy where I live for a moment, but I cannot sell my property because nobody's going to give you a permanent loan or mortgage if your house is in a floodplain. The other thing as well is, let's consider the density. Ten point nine-one per acre. I know most of it, you can't develop on it because it's in a floodplain. You're a very respectable firm, but this deal is not a good one for the city. Why? Why do we need eleven units for one acre? On top of that, where the actual development is planned, the road is very narrow. You have a development cross from the street, that's just going to cause more congestion, and I know somebody talked about it. I'm going to wrap up and talk about the sewer improvement. Now, at the back, we have an easement with the city, and there's been a sewer improvement since January of this year. We've had six break-ins, six break-ins. We are forced in Westfield Trace to start up a neighborhood watch. We've done that in the past couple of months, just purely to keep an eye on that. That's something we've never had to do before. So the walking trail sounds like a great idea, but as far as I'm concerned, it's just going to open up my property further to thieves. There's other concerns as well, but I think we've talked about them, the loss of trees. I'm worried about that floodplain, that's the biggest, and the thieves that are going to come into the community. Thanks for hearing me.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person?
This is my notes. I don't want to be...
Yeah, you want to just, if you take that mic and sort of turn it to your left, here you go.
And I'm his neighbor, so I'll let him speak for us, because we've talked, but we live, both of us are from Surrey Park. So we've compared notes and he'll speak for us. Jerry Colette, Surrey Park. I just got a few notes. I'll make it quick. Thank you for attention to this matter. My main thing is property value. I mean, the pricing, the sign is going to go up, it's going to say, you know, the one-nineties, that's going to really hurt our resales. My neighborhood started in the two-oh-fives when they first built, and they went up to the two-thirty-five, two-forty range. If you just put a sign that says one-nineties, that's going to bring our property values down. There's some homes right down the road for them. I think they're in the three or four hundred thousand dollar range, it's going to bring them down. It's just going to bring property values down, just by simply putting that sign saying one-nineties. It's going to really kill our resales. The fee simple to Ms. Blustine, I hope I didn't mispronounce your name, fee simple means you handle everything, and your homes do age differently. We are fee simple. If I had a chance to do it again, I would definitely do condo, because a condo takes care of everything. You take care of your roof, you take care of your outside painting, you take care of a lot of stuff on your building. The HOA does not do that. The HOA sends out letters saying, "Hey, you need to do this, otherwise it will be fine." So that's what fee simple does mean. It's much better, I think, to have a condo, okay?
I'm sorry, I'm a Realtor, and I just never ran across that before, and I was like, "What?"
Okay. The deceleration lane, if this, and one thing, I'm actually for a development going there. I'm not saying I'm against it. I'm just saying that a lot of the things they're proposing to try to squeeze such high density into there, I think that just needs to be condensed. I'd rather see less homes at a higher value, which helps everyone, and also alleviates a little bit of the traffic issue. So I'm for a property being there and a good quality property. If it's going to raise our property values, hey, I'll help them build it. So the deceleration lane that they're proposing to put in is the worst idea ever. I've almost had three... I've almost had three head-on collisions. I live right across the street from Primrose. I've had almost three head-on collisions from people passing in the deceleration lane. For me to go left, they'll go around, and it just creates a much more dangerous situation. I'd rather just see a two-lane road which naturally slows down traffic. So the deceleration lane, if this does go into effect, please do not put one in, because I travel around with my three-year-old, and I just don't want anything bad to happen to myself, my child, or anyone in that manner. You know, the 10 units per acre, that's a bit much. Bring the density down, bring the quality up, bring the pricing up, please. Let me see if I got all my notes. I think that about covers it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Marilyn Blackburn, and I live at 1034 Huntington Trace Drive. And my property is right across the street from what we call the garden. One of the things I do want to say, Mr. Randall, when he said that at the P&amp;Z meeting, that it was a six-to-zero vote in favor of the rezoning. Unfortunately, the way the signage is set up on Church Road, you actually have to stop to look to the right to see what is going on, to even know that there would have been a meeting for us to attend to address these issues prior to coming here. So with that said, I think that the community was at a disadvantage, because I actually took some time and walked through the community of Surrey Park and of Huntington Trace, as well as the homes that are further up Church Road near Old Concord, and spoke with the residents to find out what their issues were as it relates to this development coming to us. And some of the things have been addressed. One of them in particular is the fact that traffic is going to be horrific. Starting at 6:30 in the morning until 9:00 a.m., traffic is crazy. Now, I normally don't walk that early in the morning, but because there's so much traffic on Church Road, and it's dark right now, I'll actually go out and walk. Because if anybody's going to snatch me, there's enough traffic out there for somebody to see that somebody just took me. So somebody's going to stop and help. That just goes to show you, it is so congested out there. One of the things I like to see happen if the development goes in, can we find another way to have access, this community have access from the other side? He's talking about putting a bridge in over the stream. Invest a little more money, make it another driveway. There is, I don't know anything about that road back there, Askey, but I do know that there's a road Formula One, and I'm not sure how that connects with the school or with the stream or anything like that. But can we have another access instead of having additional, almost 100 cars coming onto Church Road to congest traffic even more? And when I look at the fact that they're going to our green space, where's it going? Yes, you're going to leave some there, but still, you've got 49 homes coming in. Are we going to have a concrete jungle eventually on Concord Road, I mean, on Church Road? It's really going to be very inconvenient for the residents that are living there. Mr. Randall, with all due respect, we are not disgruntled homeowners, we're concerned homeowners. And we're concerned about the safety of our community and the fact that you're bringing in an additional 49 homes with, if they're for families, you've got additional children that are coming in. So now that puts more pressure on our schools, Norton Park. And we're already trying to work to make our schools even better now. So that's even more of an issue for us as well. Let me make sure I've gotten everything here. I think that really is about it. And with that, Mayor and Council, I yield.
Thank you.
How you doing, Mayor? My name is Jared Winkle. I'm a president of the Homeowners Association of Brookside Park. So, Mr. Fennel, I feel your pain from you doing it before. Exactly, exactly. Our homeowners association has submitted a letter to our board representative. Hopefully she's passed that out amongst you, so you can see some of our outlines and concerns. But I wanted to address a few of those. With all due respect to Venture Homes and the CEO, I mean, he can play with the numbers all he wants in terms of the square footage cost and the cost of how many homes he's putting per acre, but in reality, we all know it's going to be 10 homes per acre for that development. A very overcrowded section already. You know, there's too many homes there with traffic. We live, as far as, if you don't know where Brookside Park is, we're past the bridge by where Nursery Road is, okay? And when they say there's traffic, there's traffic. There's traffic back from South Cobb of the morning, all the way past our entrance, which is past the bridge. So the infrastructure's not there for what kind of traffic and what kind of residents and homes that are there already. I mean, that's a problem already. You know, we did meet with Venture Homes the other day, and pricing is a concern for us. The CEO admitted himself that, you know, he's talking about pricing 190,000, 220,000. He admitted himself that they may sell for far less than that. He said that in a meeting, okay? You know, when you change the zoning for a development and allow this kind of density, it's going to open up all kinds of things. It's going to, you know, Smyrna's going to have issues with other developments wanting to build that kind of density in these small lots. And that's not something we necessarily need for this community. Well, you know, I'm all for, and I think our community's all for, you know, development progress, we're happy with that. We're happy with development progress, but there's a right way to do it and there's a wrong way to do it. And building this many homes on this smaller property can only open up more problems. To me, it sets a bad precedent. You know, sorry, I'm looking at my notes. The builder tells us he's going to be a good neighbor, and that's all well and good for the two years that he's there. And me being the board president for our HOA, I can tell you what that means after the builder's gone. And it's a whole different world after the builder's gone. They could care less after two years, okay? They talk about the trail maintenance, oh yeah, we're going to leave it up to the HOA. We've had that same issue with our community, because that's what the builder told us. We're going to build you this nice trail, which never happened. This builder's going to do something similar, I would assume, and then it's up to the HOA to take care of it. It's a very expensive prospect for whether you have 50 homes, 20 homes, 100 homes. And I'm sure with that amount of property, it's going to be a very expensive prospect. Let's see. I mean, that's basically it for us. I appreciate your time. Again, this is, I'm representing all of our homeowners. It's not just me saying this. I was encouraged by an overwhelming vote from the homeowners that live where I live to come and speak to you today and submit our letter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and City Councilmember, thank you for the opportunity to express our position on this zoning request. My name is Zoe Reyes. You've received an earlier email from me today. My husband, Daniel, who's in the audience, and myself have been residents of the City of Smyrna for over eight years. The last six years have been resided at Brookside Park, less than half a mile away west of the development being discussed at this hearing. I would like to respectfully urge you not to approve this request for the following reasons. We have already touched on some of them. Definitely, I am concerned about the density issues. These properties being looked at, and this is a correction to my earlier email, I have spoken when I portray the whole deal as having been a sold deal already. I hear that the purchase of these properties is being considered based on the outcome of this hearing, so I stand corrected on that issue. But you have these developers coming from out of the woodworks, trying to make the economics work for them, as Mr. Randall indicated to us last Wednesday, okay? By moving the density bar, the density needle for these properties in their favor. That's what this is all about. I'm as capitalistic, even if I have an accent, as any of you, and I believe in making a profit. But I'm going to tell you this, not at my expense. That's the bottom line. We all play that game. And this is what this is all about. Let's move the numbers, so I can have the economics to make the profit that I want, and let's see how we can work up the system to get to that target. I would rather see less homes at a higher price point in line with the new developments that were built along the side of Innisbrook Brookside Park than to have this kind of density. And I am not embarrassed to say so, and I'm a firm proponent of going that way. My question to City Council is, where do we stack up in the number of townhomes like this one that are being developed for City of Smyrna? I don't have the statistics. I would like to see them. Are we at par with similar communities our size in the greater Atlanta metropolitan standard area? Are we higher? Are we lower? I drive around, there are a bunch of townhomes being built in our area. And what I find amazing is that the HIC had our section, City of Smyrna's one of the hottest community. I am puzzled when Mr. Randall, and by the way, the mic is coming and going, I find that annoying. I am puzzled that Mr. Randall indicated that he cannot make the economics work for a lower-density development. My real estate friends in Smyrna are sitting pretty right now. We are blessed with an awesome location and with the ballpark being built and all this development going on. I question why we need to go to this higher-density makeup. I am concerned with setting up precedent for this kind of building in our community. You have heard the traffic concerns. I encourage you to drive up and down our stretch of road for a day, for a week, in the mornings and in the evening, and tell me that we are within acceptable traffic levels. The books I heard say that we haven't even reached the max. Well, I'll tell you, in my book, we're up there, and I'm not looking for more traffic. And once that Old Concord's Windy Hill development gets built, that's going to be, I don't even know how we're going to move around. So I'm really respectfully request that you look at this. And is that me beeping that I'm almost done?
A little bit longer.
Okay. With the concerns of protecting homeowners' rights to their property values, I know that's a tough one. I know that's a tough argument to win, but I ask you to please look for ways of increasing our values. I haven't seen a cost benefit that matches the $200,000 that Mr. Randall said will be added to your coffers against the incremental cost of such a development. I cannot only look at one side of the equation. What does a development like this in a high-density area does to the city coffer as far as outflows? Please consider our request for turning this rezoning down. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker?
I'm the next speaker, Mr. Mayor, but the issue that I've-
Well, come on up, because I'm not going to charge you her 40 seconds that she ran over. You get the full five.
My name is Antonio Cadet. I live in 503 Church Road, is less than 500 feet from the development itself, on those house brick that are there. I have listened to all the comments that has been made so far, and those are some of the issue that I have myself. And I don't see how the development being proposed here, how that is going to help those people who have already invested so much money in the neighborhood. Also, talking about that trail that Mr. Randall is talking about, can you imagine some people move there? Now they have tough time, now they have to pay for their property itself, and then they have to pay for maintaining the trail, they lose their job. You think they are going to run away and leave the property there? So the property is going to, as many people can live, the subdivision per se, those property are going to be left vacant. Therefore, you got more houses being vacant in the area, and the property value keeps going down. So for all I have heard, I haven't seen how, what is being proposed is going to increase the property, or is going to help the homeowner in the area. Thank you.
Just to make sure that, I think those trails were not Mr. Randall's idea, they were added to the stipulation. So, okay. Anyone else that, ma'am?
Thank you for giving me a moment to speak. My name is Gina Missias-Pais. I live at 509 Church Road, neighbors. We just moved here 15 months ago. So this has been a very interesting experience, especially trying to get acclimated with traffic in Atlanta in general. This morning, my husband and I decided to get up and, just for the fun of it, see how long it would take for us to get out of our driveway. So pulling out of our driveway, we actually have to turn left in the direction of traffic towards South Cobb. 15 minutes to get out of our driveway this morning at 6:30. That's a little bit ridiculous. I worry that you're going to add 49 units, and even if it's 49 cars or 100 cars, you're still adding capacity. So while I completely support progress, where is the infrastructure to support the progress? I ask that you seriously consider this. I also ask that we maybe do a traffic study, if that's possible. So I know that a lot of these projects have to be pretty large in order for us to do a traffic study. But from what I understand, if we have smaller projects, they don't warrant the traffic study. And so a lot of these big projects have turned into small projects that have just multiplied and multiplied and multiplied. And we're kind of at a point right now where we're about to bust. So I, as well as all of my neighbors, have invested a lot of money in our homes. And at the end of the day, we really just want to be able to pull in and pull out without having to wait for a really long amount of time. And so I would just encourage all of you to possibly step into our shoes for just a few moments and understand that while we really do believe in progress, what are we doing to support that progress? And I think that we'll all come up to the same conclusion, which is to say no, we really don't want this property to be built. Thank you.
Ma'am, can I ask you, you live on Church?
I don't-
So are you west of the property?
I am two doors down, yes, from the property.
Okay. Okay. I'm just trying to figure out which house or which area that you, so you're west of where this development is?
It's the first big brick house.
You're west, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I want to assure you that a lot of us empathize on the traffic thing. My neighborhood is one of those that enjoys the Douglas, Paulding, and West Cobb infusion and pass through our city every day. Smyrna's very convenient in that respect. So that experience you have is very similar to mine. I'm on the very south side of town, off Cooper Lake Road. Took me 15 minutes as well to get out of there. The last time I tried it, 6:30. So we're all empathizing. I think you can go per person on the panel and see that. We're sort of a, somewhat of a victim of our own success and our own geography, but it is a broader problem than this property represents. So the traffic issue is shared empathy around the room, just so you keep that frame of reference.
It just makes it very difficult when I'm the one who wanted this house, not my husband. So it's very difficult.
Fair point.
Very fair. So again, just a traffic study, because I understand a lot of us are really flying under the radar when we do smaller-scale projects. But again, they start to add up, and we're in a really big economic boom right now. And that's not to say that another developer isn't going to, you know, want to come in and build something else relatively close. So I think we really are at a point where we're at our max on that road. And unless we're willing to expand the road and make it a tooling, which I honestly don't think is feasible, we really have to think about something.
Maybe if we check Paulding County tags or whatever.
I wish we could control, I wish we could control everything that's west of us, because I'll tell you, I think the majority of that traffic is coming from the western part of the county. West Cobb, Paulding County, they've figured out a way to sneak through here.
Right.
But thank you for your comments.
Well, thank you. And I have two minutes, so I do want to say this. You know, we had a- You know, we had only been here five days and took my daughter to the public school, which was Norton Park. And the experience that I had that day was shattering. There was no place for my daughter to sit in the classroom. And the teacher expressed to me that she thought she only had 16 kids, but had just found out that her class was going to be expanding to 25. When I asked her where everyone was gonna be sitting, she said, oh, I guess I'll shove a chair here and, you know, put a chair there. And I, all of a sudden, envisioned my child sitting with books on her lap. So thank God, we found a private school and got my daughter enrolled into that private school. And so capacity issues, I think, are a really big deal, too. When you visit some of the schools, you see that they're busting at the seams, and you're adding, again, more homes, which means more children most likely. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that was -- yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Johnny Gray, and I live in the Brookside Park area. I have just one statement. It's just one thing that I have noticed, and then also have a question to propose to you all. One is that I've noticed that 30082 is considered, you know, the old area of Smyrna. And the more ideal area is 30080 area. And when you're trying to get someone to come and give, do a little bit of work in your area, they say, we don't do, we don't work in that particular area because it's considered the old area. So my question to you all is, if this project was proposed in one of the other areas of Smyrna, you know, along the Atlanta Road, yes, the Vining's, that particular area, would this type of project be allowed based on the way it is presented today?
Well, I would say, I'd say this. I've lived here all my life so far. 82 is not the older part of Smyrna. 80 is really the older part.
Well, I guess if you're looking in some of the other areas, on the Atlanta Road area, south of the Concord Road, that particular area is where they would do more work in because it is the higher-dollar homes, the newer homes. And in some parts of the 82 where we are, is you have sprinkles of new places where there has not been, you know, newer, more expensive homes. So I'm really more so talking about west on Church Road and west of Old Concord.
Yeah, I'd like to say a couple of things. First of all, anything that is in the City of Smyrna is Smyrna, and it is not Vining's, nor will it ever be Vining's. We are Smyrna. And I've said many times, you need to own your Smyrna and take pride in your Smyrna. Secondly, and Mr. Fennell might be able to elaborate on this, but I think there are a lot of folks in 30126 who'd be more than happy to be in 30082, and they're definitely high-dollar homes.
Where'd she go? I turned around, she left. Yeah, if this was on Atlanta Road, south of Concord, you know, it's different, it's different type housing.
Well, but to that end, I'll interject that we have had recently several approvals for residential developments, townhome and otherwise, and actually a single-family development at the Belmont Hills area that is, it's north of Concord Road, but I think it's still an area that people would consider to be, you know, a nice place to live. And that is higher density than we've ever had anything for a single family. They're basically detached townhomes. And so I don't think that it's necessarily fair to say that a townhome development wouldn't happen in any other part of Smyrna. I think that's inaccurate, and I think that we have shown that in this room.
I'm an 82er like y'all. I'm living in 30082, so. Hold on, yeah, just one second. If there's anybody else that was sworn in that would like to make any comment, I'll give you --
30 seconds.
No, 15.
15.
Okay, 20.
One of the points that I wanted to make that I actually forgot to bring up is, you know, the builder mentioned about economics to us and about how the economics would support the cost level that he's talking about. I can tell you that the homes that have resold out of our community just recently in the 340s, 350 range, sold within seven days. So the economics are there for a high-level support of homes being built or condos being built or whatever.
You know, I would just say this, and this is on my 20 seconds, is that generally speaking, when the builder comes up and says they'll be 190, they're probably gonna be higher than that. I think they give themselves a little cushion. But by law, we cannot zone by price. We can't say, you can have 300 homes if you're doing them for a million dollars each. You can't do that. You're just, but it's been, my involvement has been that the housing, if they say 190, it's gonna be, it'll probably start out, and watch, this won't be it, and then you'll be back up here saying, hey, what'd you tell us? But I think that generally speaking, they give a little cushion, so.
And I can understand and appreciate that he was giving us that speech, that what the economics show, and the economics show a little bit differently than what he's saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that was sworn in? Okay. Ms. Wilkinson?
Thank you, mayor. I was just wondering if Sean Randall would mind coming back up and possibly responding to some of the citizens' comments, if that's okay? Thank you.
That's a pretty big task, Susan. First of all, I hear everyone loud and clear, pricing. And I've said this before, if I could build one house and sell it for $12 million and find a buyer, I'll sell it tonight. But I don't, I don't think that's the market. We will put probably 11 and 1/2 to 12 million dollars on the tax roll if this project is approved. That does equate to $200,000 in incremental taxes every year, which at a 6% cap rate is probably 2.2, 2.5 million dollars to the city over the, that's discounted, that's today's dollars to the city that this project will bring. And I'm sorry about the pricing thing that you, the takeaway you had was that, you know, we're gonna cut prices. We are loath to cut prices. I can't say we never cut price, but it's on an individual, one-off basis, typically on a house that has sat and sat for whatever reason. We chose pink carpet and it didn't sell. But the last couple of years, our prices have gone up probably 12 and 15% respectively on an annual basis. But, you know, I can't stand up here straight-faced and tell people that, you know, the disaster that was 2007 won't happen again, and it won't happen to this project. I think you guys would brand me a fool and throw me out of here. But I think the mayor is right on. When we say 190s, that might be one or two houses. And I do go back to, we're higher price per square foot than the most successful townhome project in Cobb County, which happens to be in the City of Smyrna. We will be a higher price per square foot. And I would dare say that, from a location standpoint, whatever that means, they're probably better located than we are. We are pushing the envelope as hard as we can to make this deal work. And I know that may be a tough pill for everyone to swallow, but that is indeed the case. We're proud of what we do. We think it's a good project. We think it will enhance the city. We think that the architecture and the quality of the product, when you drive down Church Road, you will be pleased with what you see.
The trail, we had a couple of folks that just said they did not want a trail for whatever.
We're glad to take it out. I mean, I'd be thrilled to take it out. You know, I think the pavilion is probably makes some sense and would add some value, but absolutely. And when I say trail, let's everybody understand what that is. The trail is four foot wide because it cannot be concrete. You're in an area where you cannot build a cement sidewalk. So it has to be, by definition, a surface that allows water to go through. So it will be, you know, on either side will have probably, you know, kind of branches, tree branches, whatever, kind of defining the trail, and it will be bark chips.
Let me ask Scott, our attorney, Scott Cochran, if we had a stipulation like that in the zoning, how do you enforce that stipulation if, say, that the trail's built and then the HOA does not want to maintain it anymore?
You know, once --
Because it's only for use for the residents that live in that subdivision.
It would be like, you know, it'd be like anything else where the property owner, in this case, would be the HOA, would have to maintain it. And we could put a zoning stipulation that there's gotta be a trail. The level of the maintenance would be debatable. There's not a lot to maintain on a natural trail. And I think the way that I saw, it's just a trail that leads into the green space. I don't think it's a trail through the green space, is it?
No, it is not. We essentially stop at the creek. I mean, we provide a crossing, but we stop at the creek that bisects the property north to south.
So there's not a lot of maintenance to do on this trail. It's just basically a way into the, into the green space common area. So it would just be, it would have to be maintained consistent with our property maintenance code. Yeah, if we did more than that, it'd be impossible to enforce. You know, we don't want to have different neighborhoods with different obligations of property maintenance. We want to have a uniform.
Any other questions, Ms. Wilkinson or Mr.?
Did I answer your questions? I'm, you know, I took, I took the best shot I could.
Oh, thank you. There's another question that was brought up with the concerns about the floodplain. And I would like to maybe talk a little bit about, more about that, because I know that there's some, you know.
Absolutely. None of our structures will be built in the floodplain. No structure in the floodplain. By law, we can't do it. So other than, we can underbrush, we can clean up, we can get rid of the briars, and we can build this natural trail. But other than that, we can't put any structure in the floodplain. And all of our structures have to be out of the floodplain, so our homeowners won't be required, you know, that I'm aware of, will have to have flood insurance or anything like that, because we will, we will certainly build everything out of the floodplain, structure-wise.
Hold on, hold on, I can't, hold on. If there's a question in relation to that, you need, well, you need to come up here to the microphone, and then we're gonna. And you're the young lady that lives at Winchester or?
Westfield. The plans right now shows one building, part of the foundation is actually in the floodplain.
Those are the old FEMA lines that we are in the process of addressing and correcting. We've had a field survey run, and that building, as it is planned, is outside the floodplain. It will not be constructed in the floodplain.
Can I point out just something that might be helpful for everybody? Back, I think it was in February, FEMA updated for the first time in 30 years, help me out, staff, their floodplain map for our region based on the Burton Dam, which was the first time they did it. And the release of waters out of the Burton Dam changes the floodplain footprint here, and it's changed a lot of topography that is in and is not in the floodplain throughout the city basin. So we're a part of a bigger picture. And I think what was being pointed out is it's, they're rightsizing the map to meet that new FEMA floodplain as opposed to what was apparently submitted at the earlier iteration. Am I understanding that correctly?
And if I understand that that map can change from time to time, where you maybe are not in the floodplain, then you're on the floodplain. Is that correct, Ken?
Yes, it is.
But that's not us. That's the federal government, but they come in. But you cannot get a building permit in the, if you've got plans to build a house in the floodplain. Is that correct?
Can you tell us just a little more about the detention area and how the stormwater runoff will be handled? Because I guess I'm hearing what Ms. McKenzie is saying and her concerns about being down, sort of downstream from this development.
Well, by law, we have to capture all of the water that we generate and hold it for a certain period of time and orderly discharge it. And so we will comply with all the federal, state, and city guidelines, county and city guidelines. The pond, the way it's drawn, the detention pond, the way it is drawn on the map, I'm told by our engineer, is more than sufficient to meet all the requirements. And obviously, before we get construction drawings planned, submitted and approved, you know, we'll have to double-check all those, and all that will be verified by Eric Randall, the city engineer.
All right. Any other questions?
Don't take that trail out. I think that that's something that your homeowners would enjoy.
I, you know, I've come around, I think it's gonna add, I think it's gonna add value. It's very lovely back there on that creek.
And one other thing I want to address, it's not at all unusual for a developer to come in and have a lower price because you've got to get the people in. You've got to get X number of homes sold so that you can, but you drive around Smyrna, and there are signs everywhere where the original number has been Xed out, and the new price is there. You know, plus, at 190, if they can, if the person wants to do some upgrades to the home, well, that's gonna push the price up itself. But that is a general selling technique in real estate, so.
Mayor?
Yes. Ms. Preacher?
A couple of things. There's a lot of misunderstandings. By law, there's nothing that we can do that, by law, that we could turn this project down. We are, this project is within the guidelines of the density that we've done throughout the city. And that is in writing, so, you know, that is done. There's a lot of misconceptions about pricing. If something starts, and I'm also a real estate broker, if something starts at 190, maybe one or two homes are gonna be sold at 190. They want granite countertops, they want all these extra things added, and then you're gonna go up. But the point is, this is what's on the table tonight. This is your plan that you have submitted to us. Our job as the council is to make sure that we're doing everything legally correct, and we've been told this by our community development. And what we have to address is what's here now, not what could be. I mean, everybody can do Monday Morning Quarterback and say, oh, I'd rather you build less units and have a higher price. Well, you know, all of us would like to have our cake and eat it, too. But I want to commend you for all the hours you spent with Ms. Wilkinson and Mr. Lenica, and meeting with all the council people to get everybody's input on this. I think you've really spent a lot of time to try to make everything right. And what we have here, which I'm going to support fully, is a plan that fits in that area. Listen, I live in Smyrna. There's traffic everywhere. I cannot go without having to be in traffic every single day. So I don't know where you're gonna move, even out in Paulding County, they've got traffic. So that's something we live with. And as Mr. Welch said earlier, the city will need to address whatever issues come up. But the Windy Hill corridor is gonna make a difference in the good way of traffic that's coming from the west. Concord Road will be opening up soon, which that's gonna alleviate a lot of stuff. But we can't do anything about people that are driving through. I've got it everywhere in my ward. So I just want you to know, and I want people to understand, legally, there's no reason to turn this down. The density is right where it needs to be, and I think it's gonna be a great project. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And I want to add one point about the, everybody gets kind of fixated on this 190. There's probably gonna be two units in the 190s when it's all said and done. The, we're gonna start two buildings. We'll start one building when we first start the project. We're not gonna build all 49 units at one time. We're gonna start one building out front. The end units of that building will be well over $200,000, 215, and a price per square foot of probably $125 a foot on the end units. But we'll start one of the buildings in the back. Those prices are gonna start in the, easily in the 215, 220, and go up to 240, you know, 245, if that's where the market will take us. So, you know, I know people are fixated on the 190s, but the fact of the matter is, when it's all said and done, again, I go back to the Lennar project across from the old Campbell High School on Atlanta Road, they've sold 48 units. The average price, $244,000. We're gonna be right on that price. I think, or very, very close to it when it's all said and done. So, you know, we are proud of this project, and I fought very hard for it. We, as a company, have fought very hard for it because we believe it's, it's a good use for this property and will enhance the city.
Any other que, Mr. Lenica?
Mr. Randall, a couple of things. First, I guess we first talked about this project in July and then again about a week ago, week and a half ago. I appreciate the movement that I've seen in your plans and effort to meet all the different requests and requirements. I agree with what you said earlier. The, the project as it's put together now is much better than the project as it first started, at least from my viewpoint. I want to clarify something that's been brought up about the trails. I didn't ask for a walking trail, per se. What I asked for was some way that if this is approved, that the homeowners and the HOA on the east side of that north-south creek could access the property on the west side, that undeveloped wooded floodplain, to maintain it. I mean, they're going to be responsible for keeping trash out of it, or tires, or, you know, doing whatever they do with that property. And if they can't even get to it, how are we going to expect them to maintain it? And so what you did by providing, you know, a crossing point over that creek towards the north end of the property satisfied my request. You know, if you were the homeowners, want to do more than that, I'm perfectly good with that. But most importantly, I think it'd be wrong for us to, to put together a proposal knowing that the residents that would live there in the end would be unhappy because they'd be responsible for property they couldn't even get to, you know, without risk life or limb, or whatever. Because on the street, it's blocked by other houses and other property. I mean, they'd have to literally walk all the way down Church Road, turn the corner, walk down Old Concord Road, and come in the other direction to even get to that property. So I appreciate the fact that you've put that crossing point in there, how elaborate that is, how the HOA chooses to maintain that, you know, up to, up to them. But in the end, they're going to be responsible for maintaining that property. And so I think they have a self-interest to, to do something over the years, to provide a capital reserve and address those kinds of issues, whatever that means. And I'm not here to try to tell you or the future homeowners, if this goes through, what that means. They're smart enough to figure that out for themselves. I think that's just a normal thing.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm still sitting here thinking about how I'm going to vote on this, and the biggest issue that I am concerned about is the value proposition in terms of the impact on the adjacent surrounding properties. I hear what you're saying about maybe only a couple of units in the 190s. And we had a similar experience at Vintage Square in my ward, which you've cited several times. When the market crashed and those builders, ABG Development, went under and got foreclosed on, the market reset from the 400s to when Red Oak and Lennar came in, to the 190s. And that was not very helpful to the people that had already purchased in the 400s. But nobody had seen a recession like we saw in 2008, 2009 since my parents saw the Great Depression. I mean, I hope in our lifetimes, that's the worst we ever see. It wasn't good for anybody. It wasn't good for anybody in this room.
We, we felt the pain.
Yeah, everybody felt the pain, whether it was your retirement savings, or your loss of job, or cut in income, everybody felt the pain. We, we don't, none of us want to go through that again. But in the end, particularly once Lennar and Red Oak started building in there, and then Lennar kind of took it over, they very quickly advanced the prices up into, you know, the mid-2s or wherever they're headed now. And I think that's beneficial for, for the neighborhood. I, I think the sooner you can get to a price point equal to the surrounding properties, the better everybody's going to feel, and the better you're going to feel, the more money you're going to make, you know, in your own company.
Well, and, and we're capitalists. We have to make a profit, or I won't be standing up here trying to zone property. If we don't make a profit-
And I'm all for capitalism.
Yeah. And, and one thing about your, your comments to staff today that struck me was the sentence of, something to the effect of, in the 27 years I've been on this council, I've never voted for a project whose values are less than the surrounding areas.
That's, that's correct. A new project, that's correct.
That's right. And I know I'm butchering it, but I think that was kind of the gist of, of the comment. And I just want to say that, at least in my opinion, if you support this project, if you choose to support this project, that statement will still be safe. Our price is significantly above the city of Smyrna price on average, the 300-80 price on average, and the 300-82 price on average. Our price per square foot, sales price estimated, is probably higher than virtually, because townhomes by their very nature are, are somewhat expensive than, than most any new product being offered in the city of Smyrna today. Now, there's, there's, clearly there's exceptions. There's some new homes that, that are in the, you know, 120s. I know, for instance, Monty Hewitt, this is outside the city, but down there, he's doing towns in the 120, 128, $130, $130 a square foot. But our $115 a square foot is very much in line with everything being done in the city today.
And not, you know, I'm just asking you to consider that value proposition for the surrounding residents and for your own self.
Wait, believe me, we, we want to take the prices up as quickly as we can. But I'm not going to mislead council either. I'm not, I don't want someone saying, well, you said you would do this and you're not doing this. We haven't been around for 30 years because we lie.
Yeah, and here's just a thought. One thing we hear from our residents over and over and over and over again, I'm, I'm sure Max and I in particular have heard it more than anybody else, is as we get older, don't forget about us as you build new homes because maybe we're in a house with a lot of steps and stairs and we can't, we need to downsize and move somewhere where we can get around, but a lot of the neighborhoods where we'd like to live in Smyrna don't have those kinds of houses for us. So one way maybe you can drive some price points and attract a, a great clientele and a good set of owners would be to do some homes with easy living standards and access, you know, designed for older folks that aren't as mobile. Because we just keep hearing there's a vast unmet need in our market for that kind of housing. And the boomers are aging. I mean, that, that market is growing, not shrinking, so, just a thought.
Thank you.
I have one quick thing I'd like to add, and that's, you know, one thing, as we've had these discussions and we've heard from the residents, and thank you very much for taking the time to come here tonight because we don't often have this level of citizen participation, and it's very nice to see that here tonight. But there seems to be a common denominator in a lot of the comments regarding traffic issues, and obviously, that is something that needs to be addressed by the city. But I think that that's independent of this development here tonight. Something is going to be built there. As everyone has said, Smyrna is hot and there is a lot of new construction going on right now. Something's going to go here, and something's going to go on just the 4.49 acre part of this because that's the only part that's legally buildable. But the traffic's going to, going to be an issue regardless. The traffic is an issue now before any homes go into the situation. So that's, you know, I think regardless of how this vote goes tonight, I think one thing that is very clear and should be clear to all of us here in this room is that we need to do something to try to address the traffic concerns, whether it has to do with, and I am not a traffic engineer, but whether it has to do with light timing or, or thinking about the way we, we build things out when we do the Windy Hill expansion, but that is something that I think we will need to address, and that is the traffic issues. But I do think that those issues are independent in a lot of ways from whatever is going to be built there, and something is going to be built there eventually.
And I'm going to tell you again, the majority of our traffic problems are not related to the development of things that have happened in the city. They're, they're west of here. When they built the Windy Mac Connector, they stopped it at Ostel Road pretty much for any improvements. So they've dumped all that traffic. So folks will find a different way to go in order to get to where they're going. And oftentimes, it's down Piter Springs Road, or it'll, it'll be Church Road. But you see that everywhere. Doing a study, it would have to be a joint study with, with the city and Cobb County, and maybe even the ARC so they can determine. But I promise you, in my opinion, that the majority of the property is coming from West Cobb. I mean, the traffic is coming from West Cobb. It's not from the developments that, that we have here. But I understand, because I go Church Road all the time. I travel that a lot. I live out off Concord Road, so I use that, that, that means of travel often. And sometimes it's tough. There's, there is some crowdedness, so. I see some hands going up. I really don't want to get into this, anything. I want to give, I'm giving everybody an opportunity to speak. I don't know, were you even sworn in?
Three.
No, you get 30 seconds, starting now. Just tell us who you are and, and where you're at. I want to give everybody an opportunity to speak.
Yes, so-
So tell me who you are.
I'm Julian Remoli. I live in Brookside Park, and I'm not a trafficking expert. I'm just an aerospace engineer. I'm a professor of aerospace engineering at Georgia Tech. So the traffic, I agree, is not necessarily coming from here, but the traffic is there. So I would like if the councils could go over there one day at 7:45 AM before making this vote, if you could postpone this vote, and you will see, you cannot turn left getting out on Church Road because it's already saturated. So assuming, let's say, we stay positive, so you turn right and try to go around, turn left on Concord, and then you hit Old Concord, and you hit Concord Road. So over there, you have a light. So if we assume a pace of eight cars per light, because I count them, we, we can pass eight cars every green light, and we cannot do more because Concord Road is already saturated because of the light in, 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 in South Cobb, all right? So assuming that, to get out these 98 cars will take 48 minutes, okay? So it'd take 48 minutes to get just these cars with the current traffic that we don't care where it's coming from. It's coming from other place, but it's there. It will take 49 minutes to get the traffic out of the subdivision. So that's the density problem. So it could be done, but, but probably we'll need to get the road on the back, get into South Cobb or another road. We'll need some other exit. We want exit, I just don't see the way. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't know where in the world, I don't know where in the world we'd, where they would put that road to exit their property. They're just, I mean, there's, they don't have any access. There's no access. They have one means of vigorous and ingress, and that's right there, going into Ask A Drive. It just, you just, you can't access it. It's private property.
Yep. I would, Mr. Mayor, on the traffic issue, I would just, in all respect to the professor and his numbers, the variables that you excluded in using your math calculation, I would invite you to come to my neighborhood, which has 955 homes coming out onto a two-lane road just like yours, has been in place for a while, and it was a problem to some people's definition the day it was built, but the west ingress traffic is as thick as you described for Church, as it is on my road and on Fontaine and on Hurt Road, and you can go all the way through all of the east-west corridors. We have a challenge. It's a broader challenge than we in Smyrna alone should bear, and in fact, that's why we have a splot on the general election ballot to pay for more, more road solutions. And there are many of them being suggested, in my opinion, not nearly enough, but it's a pay-as-you-go system that we will tackle several of those. I did want to speak to a couple of other aspects to this. We talked a little bit about the schools earlier, and, you know, your taxes that you pay, your property taxes, the lion's share of that money goes to the school board and the school system. I think paying attention to that and focusing on that, it's, it's, we don't own the school system, we don't manage the school system. We have input and we like to work hard as partners to improve it, but that is something that the school board must address as well, and they have the lion's share of the taxes in which to do so. We have also a project here that has a D cell lane. Someone mentioned they didn't want the D cell lane because of an example of something they personally had seen about someone jumping that. Our police department can speak to that very clearly. It is something that is a traffic violation that can be easily addressed, anybody who's speeding around, somebody making a turn there. But the D cell line, to me, is a logical way to allow some of the folks to get into the property and, and free up some of the lane space. It's just one of those things. I'm also concerned about the walking trail. Having that HOA experience, I don't want to burden a future HOA. I like the access point and granting them access to that side. I think that was a laudable thing, but to force the next step of developing a trail might be more than the residents who ultimately own that obligation would be willing to, to bear. I think that, again, is a logical thing to be their decision at some point, but giving them access to that other piece of the property was a significant support and help, I think. So I appreciate that. Remember that those of us who sit in these seats have only limited power as to what we can do. This area is zoned. It's appropriately allowable to do what he's proposing to do. He's gone through several layers, including through many conversations with the staff and many stipulations applied to this project to get it to this point. It's gone through legal, it's gone through planning and zoning, and if my understanding, counsel, is correct, we need a legal reason to deny something, and there are just a very few of those that exist. Am I correct in understanding that?
Well, I mean, the bottom line is, you've got to analyze it according to the standards that we have in our code. There, there are nine standards, and then in addition to that, there are standards that are specified by state and federal laws. So, and that's what the, one of the roles of Ken's department is, is to kind of go through the analysis and list all the, all the criteria. I, I don't want to say on the record ever that we don't have much as far as our ability to defend zonings because we're frequently sued, or not frequently, but we're sometimes sued over zoning decisions. And I certainly don't want to have some lawyer on the other side, you know, have this video clip that showed to the judge where I say, we don't have any defenses. Because I definitely don't want to say that. But we have to, we have to analyze these according to our own standards that are in our code.
So that those of us who are sitting in these chairs-
Okay, hold on. Y'all, hold on.
Those of us who are sitting in these chairs have tough decisions like this occasionally, and it's, it's not an easy decision sometimes. But one thing that distinguishes us and America from any other country on the planet is personal property rights. The ability of someone who owns a piece of property to follow the rules, the community standards, and go through a process and be able to utilize their property for their benefit and their profit. That's what distinguishes this country from everyone on the planet.
Ms. Wilkinson.
So, okay, so I guess I'm going to be the, the person that thinks differently, but it's my understanding that when zoning laws were put in place, I believe here in the '70s, that those laws were put in place to not only allow a, a property owner to do things with his property, but also to protect the rights of the surrounding properties. And when I go through the, the non-zoning factors to consider, I, I actually am very uncomfortable about some of the things that I'm hearing tonight. And I have concerns about the, the adjacent properties, the architectural style, the size of the homes, and I just really am uncomfortable about this tonight. And I do appreciate all the hard work that you've done, Mr. Randall, and, you know, it's been a hard decision for me because I've, you know, initially, you know, looked at it and was excited, but the more I learned and learned about the people and the neighbors and their homes and, and, you know, their investments and their concern, you know, the more, I guess, more uncomfortable that I became about it. And so I have reviewed the non-zoning standards, and I feel like that this board does have a right to look at those and decide. And so that's where I stand tonight. And as far as the traffic issues, I know those are going to be there regardless, and there's things that we need to do. But one of the other concerns that I have is the setback allowing that, those variances, the five variances and that setback where the D cell lane is going to be the 10-foot and then the, on the other side, the 20-foot. And looking at all the concerns that we've talked about, about the road and the width of the road and the problems- of the road and the problems, you know, we're going to have to address those as a city. And if there is no land on that side to expand, then we're going to have to go to the other side. And I feel like that's, you know, part of the Surrey Parks concerns. And so, anyway, I just wanted to say that, and thank you very much.
Anyone else? Any other comments? No comments? Okay.
You have not to comment, the public?
You've already, I've already given you time to comment.
I haven't answered a question.
Ma'am, I've already given you time. I gave you 40 seconds over your allotted time.
That was not answered, the question.
Well, I'm sorry. The public comment portion is finished. And I appreciate your comments, but...
But that's unfair.
Ma'am, ma'am, there's no more public comment. I gave you plenty of time to speak over your time and was patient with you. Okay.
At this time, I'm comfortable making a motion to approve item 4A, which is the item 2014-295. It's the public hearing for zoning request Z14-021, rezoning from R15 and RTD to RTD conditional for the development of a 49-acre townhome subdivision. It's a 13.203 acre tract, land lots 342 and 379. It's 619 Church Road, and the applicant is Venture Homes Incorporated.
Motion, Mrs. Nullwich, is second by Ms. Pritchett. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Still waiting on, it's approved 6 to 1. Next item on the agenda is privileged licenses, and we have none. Item 6 is formal business. We have one item on that agenda, and that's 2014-321, approval of High Roy Acre as the Fire Chief for the City of Smyrna. Background, you want me to go straight to Mr. Fennel?
I don't want to give him the background.
Mr. Fennel?
Mr. Mayor, it is my privilege to make a motion to offer the Fire Chief position to Chief Roy Acre, who's been serving in the acting capacity for the City of Smyrna Fire Department. And I make that motion at this time.
Motion is second. I'm not sure where the two council members have gone. Nope. They know. We didn't recess, so they know. Have a motion is second. And I'll just say this, I'm excited about Chief Acre being our chief. He has 24 years of experience. He knows what he's doing. We did a national search. Pardon me? You want to vote? Pardon me? Okay. All right. They want to vote, I guess. We'll make sure that I'm making the... Well, let's get him voted in first.
There's a posse. Let's take him from some of these folks.
Y'all want to vote first? And then, all those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's unanimous. Two members are not here, don't know where they are. Now, Roy, if you want to come up and if these are your parents...
I'd rather hear from your better half.
And I'm glad to see, I'm glad to see the number of firemen that are here. Roy, anything you want to say?
Oh, yeah. Couple of good things. If you don't mind, I'll take just a minute and introduce some of my family. I kind of bribed them in coming here tonight. I said, "It's just a light agenda that you'll, you know, probably be out by 8 o'clock and go eat dinner." So first of all, is my wife, Katie. Hold on, Gabby, I'm going to talk about you in a minute. Right next to Katie are my parents, Sue and Otis. You know, now Katie and I collectively, we have five children. And, you know, we really make it a point to not go anywhere with all of them at the same time, so...
That's pretty smart.
Yeah, I think so, too. Thank you. But tonight, we've got two of our kids with us. Gabby in the pigtails, doing like that. She's nine. She's an awesome soccer player. And the young man next to Dad, the really handsome guy, that's my son, Walker. Right in front of Walker is my brother-in-law, John Moss. So I want to just, you know, thank them and tell them how much I appreciate their support of me always, even when I'm wrong. So, good evening. I am grateful, among many things, but especially grateful to receive this appointment. You know, the City of Smyrna Fire Department is the best fire department in the state of Georgia. We're ranked in the top 1% along with about another 15 other lucky fire departments that get to be in the same category that we are. And of those 15, none of them deliver the level of service that the Smyrna Fire Department delivers in the timeframe in which we deliver it. And there's several reasons why those things are true. But primarily, it's because of the men and women, just like these ones behind me that wear the uniform every single day. I'm honored that they would call me their chief. My commitment to them, to all of you, to every citizen and business owner in the City of Smyrna is that I'm going to try to be my best every day and to ensure that this department is prepared to meet the future. Thank you.
Good deal. One of the things that Roy told us before the meeting that I wasn't expecting him to say, that regardless of the leadership, and this sort of shocked me, that the men and women of the Smyrna Fire Department are going to do their job every single day. And there's been a lot of controversy the last year. He said, "But there was never a doubt that those guys stepped up to the plate and they were ready to go whenever they needed to." And I think that's great because politics gets involved in a lot of things. And thank goodness that y'all sort of get a couple of levels above that. So we're looking forward to a long career, Roy.
Longer.
Longer career.
And I appreciate their support as well. But thank you all.
Chief, as I pointed out to some people who asked me earlier today, within the past year, we went through a national search, and 54 applicants came knocking on Smyrna's door and said, "I want to be your Fire Chief." You dropped your name in the ring, and we appreciate that. We went through a rigorous testing process and then an evaluative process, four layers of which resulted in five finalists. At that time, you were one of those five finalists. And to have two national finalists out of that group of applicants from around the country serve at the same time on the Smyrna staff was a proud moment. And that you're standing there as an in-house, grown-in-Smyrna firefighter who climbs to the top is another proud moment. And we appreciate your service over the last two dozen years, and we look forward to the next two dozen years, if you wish.
As do I. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy. Congratulations. I just want to welcome you aboard.
Thank you.
You probably leave those jaws of life in the closet. If I'm you, I'm in an accident, right?
I have no comment.
Thank you, Roy.
Thanks, Roy.
Good deal. Commercial building permits, we have none. Mr. Taylor, will you read the consent agenda for council's approval?
Certainly.
And do not, we'll take item D out of there.
Right. So removing that one, I believe we have seven items on the consent agenda this evening. Item A is an approval of the mayor and council meeting minutes for September 15, 2014. Item B is an approval of compliance amendments to the City of Smyrna's Mass Mutual 401A Plan and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item C is an approval of the city's wellness program renewal with Corporate Health Partners and authorize the mayor to execute related documents. Then we have a bid award toward RFP 15-010, Bank Street Drainage Project, to the lowest and most responsive bidder, Ardito Construction Company, for $37,295 and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item F is also a bid award toward RFP 15-009 for street resurfacing work to the lowest bidder, CW Matthews Contracting, for $2,069,691.45 and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item G is an approval to allow road closures for Campbell High School's homecoming parade to be held Friday, October 10, 2014, and begin at 6 o'clock p.m. And then we have an approval to allow road closures for Spooktacular Chase to be held October 18, 2014, at 8 o'clock a.m.
I think we have a quorum. We got four back now. Second. Motion is second. Approve the consent agenda with everything but D. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Did you second it? Yeah. I heard him. Okay. What do y'all need to do? Y'all need to, we got electronic failure here. No? Yes. You have to have a second to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Fennel? Okay. Is it up now?
There we go.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 40? Okay, 40. Item 9 is committee reports. We'll start tonight with Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the hose draggers have left the room, so I'm going to take this opportunity just to thank the Fire Department for the work they're doing. Maybe for the last time in three months, Ms. Sadler Jones, would you like to come and give a couple of comments about your police and fire department? If you wish, if not, not to worry.
No, she's...
We don't want her to have a child right there on the floor. Mr. Mayor, the Fire Department, having a new leader, are appropriately celebrating that moment. And the Fire Department happens to be joined by the Police Department out there at the moment, so I'm pleased that both of these departments are doing an outstanding job. Recently, the Smyrna Public Safety Foundation concluded a couple of milestones in their history. They've hired an executive director to help them with their efforts under their new chair, leadership Stacy Evans. And they are, this weekend, they will be having their appreciation gala for the firefighters and police officers. And if you would do as I try to do every chance I get, and that is, when you have an opportunity to greet one of our police, fire marshals, anyone in our law enforcement community, please thank them for the time they devote to protecting our businesses and our homes and our lives. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Mr. White-Linaca.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to thank the residents of the Westchester Commons HOA for inviting me to meet with them and be with them at their annual homeowners' meeting this past Saturday, October 4. It was good to see them and have conversations and update them on things that are going on in the city and in their area. It's a good bunch of folks just south of the east-west connector, off Camp Highland Road. Couple of events coming up that I'd like to mention. On Saturday, October 18, which is two weeks from this past weekend, Woodland Ridge Assisted Living and Memory Care is having their fall festival. It's open to the public. It's Saturday, October 18, from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. on the campus behind Ridgeview Institute. They're going to have food, arts and crafts, a petting zoo, a cakewalk, face painting, popcorn, cotton candy, games and entertainment, giveaways, prizes, antique car shows. Again, they're inviting families and folks to come, and all proceeds go to their foundation to support veterans who need financial help with assisted living. So again, Saturday, October 18, from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. I also look forward on that Sunday, the 19th, to attending the Forest Hills Fall Festival. And hopefully, we'll have good weather for both weekend events, and it'll be great to be with those folks. I also want to thank the honorary consul for Barbados, who lives in Smyrna, for inviting me Saturday a week ago to a reception co-hosted with Delta for the inauguration, reinauguration of direct flights between Atlanta and Barbados. Looks like a great little place. I don't know why I've never been there, but it looks like a great place to be and someplace Smyrna folks may want to check out if you're looking for a great vacation spot. Lovely people, lovely pictures, lovely scenery, a great time. I appreciated being invited and representing the city. With that, I yield.
Ms. Susan Wilkerson.
Thank you, Mayor. So first of all, I want to thank Westfield Trace for inviting me to their block party yesterday. They are working on their, getting their neighborhood watch program together, and it was nice to meet a lot of new people. One of the ladies that was here tonight, but she couldn't stay because she goes to Southern Polytech, and she has homework, she said, that she needs to get home to do. But she wanted to speak, and hopefully, she'll come back at another time. But one of the things that they're experiencing in Westfield Trace, and several of them spoke about the break-ins and hers as well, and they believe that these incidences are coming from the apartment complex right next to them, which is actually in the county. And I also get a lot of people and calls, complaints from the Oates of Concord, which is right across the street from the same complex. And what she wanted to ask is if we can do something about it, work together with the county, and really address the situations that are happening at that complex. It was her mention to me that she feels that a lot of the people from Hickory Lakes Apartments moved into those apartments, and that's where they're experiencing some issues. So I just want to give her that opportunity, since she couldn't stay, to say something, and hopefully, we can work on that issue. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to remind people, at least it's on my calendar, October 18 is Adopt a Mile. So everybody that's one of the volunteers for Keep Smyrna Beautiful, keep that date on your calendar. Secondly, on the 19th, as Mr. Linaca alluded to, Forest Hills Festival. And I know why he's going. It's a chili cook-off, so that's the real reason there now. But just keep those things on your calendar. The Fall Festival is also 25th and 26th this month. So we'll get a busy month. With that, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Ms. Tare Nullwich.
Thank you, sir. I would just like to take a moment to commend Smyrna Police Officer Tom Rooney. He was recognized this morning at the Chamber of Commerce's annual public safety appreciation event, and he received an award of merit. And I would be remiss if I did not note that he received this award of merit for actions he made that really helped a lot of people get out of their homes when there was an apartment building that was on fire. So thank you also to the Fire Department who put out that apartment fire, because it is important that everyone be recognized for their contributions, but especially to Officer Rooney, who received that award, and it was very well-deserved. With that, I yield.
Ms. Andrew Bluestein.
I wanted to thank the residents of Countryside for inviting me to their annual meeting. I enjoy it every year. Also, too, I wanted to commend the people that came tonight to let us know about different things that they perceived or whatever with the project. I hope that it turns out to be a really good thing for the neighborhood. And I also want to say special, we have a really great new police chief, I'm not police chief, Fire Chief. So go into your fire station. They do free blood pressure checks and stuff. So anyway, with that, I yield.
Ms. Melanie Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, want to commend Roy for all the things that he's accomplished in getting the FEMA Award for the City of Smyrna. That was quite an accomplishment, and I know you're going to be a real asset. You have been already. But to be the chief and lead everybody and keep marching on, I am just so happy that you're our new Fire Chief. And with that, I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Eric Taylor. Scott Cochran. Terry Graham. What about your assistant over there? I didn't mean to.
Hello. Yes, I would like to announce that we have hired a new deputy city clerk. She's sitting next to me. Her name is Heather Korn, and she comes to us from Court Services. And she's moved up, and she was also in the, worked for the City of Hiram. But we are very happy to have her here with us.
Welcome. For my cup of stuff. I didn't mean to.
Yes, I would like to announce that we have hired a new deputy city clerk. She's sitting next to me. Her name is Heather Korn, and she comes to us from Court Services, and she's moved up, and she was also in the, worked for the City of Hiram, but we are very happy to have her here with us.
Thank you.
Welcome. For my cup of stuff. Let's see. Showhouse hearing, we have none, citizens input. We have a few people signed up, Alec Backery, 3459, Shawnee Trail comments.
Yeah, I'd like to comment tonight on that article in yesterday's Marietta Journal in Hickory Lakes. I understand the city's sold it for 14, and the city paid 16 million of our tax dollars on it. Now, the developers only put up 8 million earnest money. That means the state still owns the property until that extra 6 million is made up. When, I don't know. But if you take the $2 million loss, we now understand that we have to pay 5.8 million on paving, excuse me, grading over there, and 1.2 million on paving. That's 7 million to the 2 million is 9 million. Now, if you add the 3.1, $3,146,000 loss in the Smyrna Commons, we're at 12 million plus in the red, not the 2 million that was said yesterday just on the Hickory Lakes. But where we're going to come up with that 12 million loss is hard to believe. Now, we lose interest on interest, interest on principal, and we've lost tax money on these properties. And I hope that this redeveloping the area, as one council person said, the halo effect, which doesn't exist, and another council person saying potential redevelopment. Again, I've been all around Hickory Lakes, all out in front of South Cobb, the businesses all look good. Going around Hickory Lakes, subdivisions, very presentable, and out to Windy Hill, back down to South Cobb, nice tree line. I don't see where we're going to get money back in redeveloping the area in the future. The park bond was 22 million. We, with 8 million for Smyrna Commons and 16 with Hickory Lakes, is 24 million, and we never even had a town hall meeting on it. Mayor, you made a comment that we had many chances to ask questions on it. My point is, how could we answer questions if we don't know any details on the transaction? Now, I hope, and I'd like to applaud Councilman Linaca, who was the only one who had the foresight to see that there were going to be losses at Hickory Lakes from the beginning. And I've said it from the beginning, you shouldn't have extended to the city knowing it was a problem. Should have kept it in Cobb County, end of story. But now, we're in a, an arrangement for the next four years or 20-year bond, we don't know. But we're finding the details after the fact. And tonight, I'd like to request that we have a town hall meeting with someone who's familiar with the contract. It's 83 pages that we have a meeting with and announce it with the city, someone who's, again, familiar with the contract, have a town hall meeting where we can have question and answers now that we know some of the details to ask. And we would look forward to this town hall meeting, because we do have questions on it, and we do know some of the details. But again, I'd appreciate, in the future here, announcing a town hall meeting, because many people have asked for it, and we need answers to our questions. After all, it is our money. Thank you.
Jared Winkle. Okay, so there, I just want to make sure. Tonight was very interesting. I'll just say this about town hall meetings, we had a town hall meeting on November the 13th, I'm sorry, November 20th of 2013. We talked extensively about Smyrna Grove, Hickory Lakes. So, we do have meetings, and it turned out pretty much just the way that we announced back in November. If there's no other business to be brought forth this body, I declare this meeting adjourned at 9:45.